Everyone, welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for November 28th. I'd like to start out with some housekeeping items. Got a number of bills that we will need to get approved, so I need a motion to approve the bills as listed on the agenda for peer review fees for 409 South Street and for legal notices to the community advocate.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, on to our public hearings. First hearing this evening is a continuation from the prior meeting. This is the appeal of 409 South Street, Gray Star Development LLC, a comprehensive permit, a 40B, to permit the construction of a 196-unit age-restricted apartment community. Request has been, this has been a request to continue the hearing to our next meeting of January 23rd. I'd need a motion.
Motion to continue the hearing for 409 South Street with Gray Star Development for a comprehensive permit to January 23rd, I believe, at 6:30 PM.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Great.
Can I just make a clarifying statement on that matter?
Yes, please.
Just so the boards are aware, obviously, we were informed of the 180-day deadline. Because they've requested the continuance, though, they've also submitted a waiver of that 100 days to accommodate for the delay in time, so it's just shifting that period of review forward. So, that is still in effect, but it's just moved back slightly.
Great. Thank you. Next order of business, this is to hear the appeal of Michael and Amanda Vitols, 12 Deerfield Road, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 4B, to construct a second-story addition, attached garage, porch, and other expansions upon property located at 12 Deerfield Road in the Residence B1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 04, plot 016043. Could I ask our appellant to please step forward? Welcome, have a seat.
Just have a couple of handouts if I could.
If we keep, if we hand them to us, we have to keep them, is that?
That's fine.
Okay, great.
Good for you.
No problem.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
We could ask you to identify yourself and let us know what you'd like to do.
Sure. My name is Michael Vitols, this is my wife next to me, Amanda. We reside at 12 Deerfield Road in the town of Shrewsbury. If I could just have a couple moments of your time, I can explain to you a little bit of history of us, or of us, and then also what we plan to do. We currently reside at 12 Deerfield Road, we have two girls, six and four, Aurora and Aria. Amanda and I purchased our home back about 10, 10 years ago, in 2013. We've made many updates to the property over that time period. We've both lived in Shrewsbury our entire lives, prior to our marriage, and we've both attended the Shrewsbury Public School System. Between the two of us, we've attended Patton School, Forest Street School, Spring Street School, the old Shrewsbury Middle School, which is now known as Sherwood, the Shrewsbury High School, both the old one on Oak Street and the new one on Holden Street. And, and last year, our daughter attended Little Colonial's kindergarten program at Shrewsbury High School, a high school in which we both graduated over 20 years ago, forging irreplaceable memories. My oldest daughter now attends Spring Street School, where my wife also holds many memories. With that said, Amanda and I have had deep rooted, seated roots in the town of Shrewsbury dating back many years now, without a doubt have served us well. We both love this town, and we want to provide our children with the same opportunities that we had. As I mentioned before, our current home is approximately 10 years now. We love it, with one exception, the lack of space. We're growing it, we're growing it pretty fast. We've established many long-lasting relationships with our neighbors, watched their children and their families grow along with ours. We really enjoy all it has to offer, and we couldn't imagine it any other way. So currently, we're looking to construct a second-story addition with an attached garage, a porch, and other expansions on our current home, to accommodate the needs of our growing family. This would allow us to stay within the community of Shrewsbury, more specifically, our wonderful neighborhood filled with great people. We've designed and created a set of architectural drawings, which are in front of you, to outline our current project intentions. We believe we've created a plan that will not only be, provide us with the necessary space, but also beautify our home, and it will also fit well in the current neighborhood environment. That's all I have. You guys have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you very much for all that information. Ms. McAllister, any further information you'd like to add?
This is special permits, mainly for that front yard setback, I think entirely for that front yard setback. It's both the second-story addition and the proposed porch. The other aspects of this project appear to be conforming, and are not included on sort of the discussion for relief this evening.
Okay, thank you. Board members? Kevin? Questions, comments?
No, I don't think I have anything. Setbacks all look good, except for that front yard setback, but it's not terribly out of place there, and I think with the porch coming a little bit further in, even with the drawings, I don't think that's a problem at all, it's just aesthetically pleasing. Thank you for the elevations, I appreciate those. So beyond that, I don't have anything further.
Okay, Peter?
Same. It doesn't look like the porch goes much further than the front stoop already goes, so I don't see there being any issue there, and all the other, everything else complies, so no problems for me.
And I have nothing to add. Looks great.
You've done a very nice presentation. No problem.
Thank you.
Great. I agree, great presentation. This is a public hearing, so I'd ask if anyone in attendance would like to be heard? Okay, seeing that there is no one, might I get a motion?
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And I, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
I make a motion to approve the special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 4B, to construct a second-story addition, attached garage, porch, and other expansions upon property located at 12 Deerfield Road in the Residence B1 District.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, I'm gonna step away, Lisa, would you like to take over?
Uh, sure, what are we doing? Okay. Our next...
Voting sheets for this one.
Our next 6:30 hearing, let me make sure it's in the proper order, is to, I believe it's 240 South Quincy, if I read it correctly from the legal notices instead of the agenda?
It's gonna be 332.
It is, okay, so we will...
Just go back that way.
Go back to three. So our next public hearing is to hear the appeal for 332 South Quincyman Avenue in the Residence B2 District, from Mary J. Holland, for a special permit to section 4B, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling.
Hi.
All right.
Good evening.
Hello there, Richard.
Hello there. Good evening. For the record, and you know me, but for the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney here representing Jody Holland, who is your appellant, and my offices are at 11 Maple Avenue. This property on South Quincyman Avenue is a, an older, an older home, to say the least. This would be a demolition of the existing house and a rebuild, and the setbacks actually will be a little bit better, a touch better, and so therefore it is a special permit. It's a single-family residence, going from a single-family to a single-family. I would suggest to you that, and I understand she's spoken with her neighbors, and that the reaction that she got was very favorable, this is a great improvement to the property. Obviously, a new house instead, instead of an older rundown home is better for the neighborhood, better for all of us. This is a situation where, obviously, there's no nuisance value, you're dealing with a single-family home, a single-family to a single-family, so with that said, I would ask you to find that there would be no nuisance, and we'd ask you to grant the special permit.
All right, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I guess I would just say, I think it's, it's such a tough lot, it's so narrow, it looks like you're doing as good as you can do in terms of setbacks, and as you mentioned, it's an improvement on several of them, so I think it looks fine, looks great.
Okay. I'll go next. Could you just confirm for me, on the eastern side, the side setback, what the distance will be now? It was 4.3, but it's...
Five feet.
Yeah, five feet.
Okay, there we go, thank you. So slight improvement, but all around.
Yes.
Yes, but all around, very nice. Okay. And, do you have any comments or questions? Kevin?
Nope, nothing further.
All right, wonderful. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone to give public comment, please do so now, you can come to the mic and state your name and address. Doesn't look like it. All right, so thank you very much. Can I have a motion to close?
Move to close the public hearing?
I can't second it, Madam Chair. Wonderful, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, is there any discussion among board members before we entertain a motion? Oh, I forgot one thing, I didn't ask you for any comment, I'm so sorry, Ms. McAllister.
I didn't have any.
There weren't any, anyway.
No.
Exactly, you would've interrupted me.
Yeah. But I just wanted to remind you, this is a four-member board, so it has to be a unanimous vote tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And we were aware of that.
You're okay.
We were aware of that.
Okay, wonderful. If there's no discussion, can someone make a motion?
I move to approve a special permit under section 4B, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 332 South Quincyman Avenue in the Residence B2 District.
Seconded.
Wonderful, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so voted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
So now 240.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is to hear the appeal of...
I think that might be an applicant's easel, but yeah.
This is to hear the appeal of Ann Mormon, 240 South Quincy Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., for a variance and a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section seven, table two, and section 4B, to construct a garage and addition and replace a deck upon property located at 240 South Quincy Ave. in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessor's tax plate 45, plot 00082. Welcome.
Thank you.
Get your name for the record, please.
Jeff Bailey, co-owner with Ann Mormon, and husband. So, we're coming before you today to significantly improve our home, and add an addition, as well as a garage. So, the challenge is, currently, we have a carport, and the wind just blows in right off the lake, and puts snow in underneath the carport, and then once, and so we actually sought a variance before, in 2015, to move to adding a garage and a dwelling, or an addition as well. And at that time, in 2015, it was approved, we're coming back to you with actually more specific plans this time around, after restarting the whole process, and slightly bigger addition, but pretty much conforming to the same setbacks as we had before.
So essentially, we're...
This is the architect.
I'm Chris Adcock, I'm a resident of Grafton, I'm representing Jeff and Ann. We're expanding...
You're the architect? Sorry, I just want to understand, you're the architect? Okay.
So, we're adding this portion of green here, so it's, it's gonna be a garage in the front, and expanded living space would include a kitchen at the first floor, and a mudroom breezeway area, and the new entrance would be through, on the side of the house here. And upstairs would be a home office, pretty much, and a stair, a connector.
So if I could ask, so we have that plot plan in front of us, and it's a little bit hard to follow, because there's just so many boxes overlapping, and so I just have a couple clarifying questions.
So it's a little bit of an overlay, so if, you know, some of this...
Right, exactly, there...
Here, we brought this to help clarify, clean that up a little bit, so...
Right. So, my, I guess one question I have is, there's, the carport, which is to be removed, is currently 3.9 feet from the line?
Correct.
And the new structure, the proposed structure, will be 5.8 at one corner, and 5.3 at another corner?
Correct.
Or, I'm sorry, 5.3, and then 5.0 at the front corner, is that right?
Yeah, it's sort of skewing away from...
Because the property line?
Down towards the line.
Right, okay. And then the, the rear line, obviously, is, goes further towards the lake, but mostly within the building envelope, except for one corner. And the front changes primarily because of the proposed garage, but again, is mostly within the building envelope. Do I have that?
Yes.
And, I can see from the photos here, but this is another question I had, in terms of the topography of the site, it's a very steep drop-off towards the back, is that right? Towards the lake?
Right.
I row, I've been, I know that cove, and it's, it is...
And we have photos here to kind of show, you know, some of these are helpful here.
So it wouldn't be particularly practical to build further out, move these things, shift these things towards the back, you'd be getting very close to the lake, and it would be three stories, you know, basically, to the ground? Okay. All right, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Lisa?
Peter just clarified everything for me, really, there's no other place for you to put this.
No, so, and that's the garage, yeah. Yeah, so once we move the garage, then that, currently, it's a side entrance, so then that took away the entrance, then we had to move...
That dictates everything.
And then, the house has been added on to so many times. The original entrance used to be on the north, and actually, the property to...
Wow.
The north is actually the old garage, they had split that at one time, and so, the only way to get it to flow nicely internally was to put the stairs in the addition and shift everything over.
Yeah.
A challenge, but you managed to do it without, with very little variance, really, need for variance, so...
And we think this...
Fitting word.
Yeah, it's, it is.
It keeps it contained, so, I mean, the property next to us is rundown, but eventually, I presume someone will buy it, and it should allow them to build well there, and not obstruct anyone's views and things like that.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Ann?
Oh, I have nothing.
Kevin?
Just the one corner that gets closest to the lake, if I'm reading plans correctly, that's a deck?
The north side, or the...
Uh, let me work myself out.
West, really, or...
South side. So the bottom corner on these plans, or, yes, so right where your left hand is.
Is it decked here?
Other, other corner.
Side right here.
Nope, same drawing, just the other, right there, yeah.
Still over patio.
Patio, okay.
The projection, about six feet.
Okay.
And this is setback from the property line over here, so there's some steps coming down, and then up.
Oh, okay. That's the only question I had, no issues with that.
And just to clarify for the board, a patio is not a structure, and it's not subject to setbacks, so we had them revise their rear yard setback to show it to be in conformance with the rear yard setback, because as it's shown now, it is not, but it's a patio structure, or patio.
Anything else roaming on this?
No, it's, it's, just to kind of talk a little bit more specific on the zoning analysis, the carport was originally built via a variance, and so, the variance is needed to alter it, and then the special permit is gonna be for that small, kind of, relatively small expansion of the deck on the northern side, because that is a pre-existing non-conforming setback.
Okay.
Deck on the northern, got it.
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody in attendance wish to be heard in the matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close, public hearing?
Motion to close?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion?
Yes.
So, let me just make sure I have it. All right, I make a motion to approve the variance and special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven, table two, and section 4B, to construct a garage and addition and replace a deck upon property located at 240 South Quincyman Avenue in the Residence B2 zoning district.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, this is a continuation from our November 28th meeting, and this is 701 713 Boston Turnpike, Box Shrewsbury, Worcester LLC, 11 Most Street, Norwood, Mass. This is for a special permit, section six, table one, to locate a sales room for automobiles and a garage and repair shop, and a variance to section seven, table two, to park inventory and display vehicles with a non-conforming setback. Welcome?
Thank you, Madam Chair, if we could just have a second?
Sure. Take your time.
For the record again, Richard Ricker, attorney representing the applicant, to my left is Michael Clemmie, who is the principal of the group, and to my right is Patrick Healy, our engineer, and Maureen McHugh is to his right, she's with this man, the traffic engineers who did the study that's before you. And we understand that there's been some additional comments that you've received as late as, late this afternoon, from the peer review consultant relative to the traffic question on South Street, and we would be pleased to address that during this portion of the hearing. But since the last time we were in front of you, you asked us to try to address some of the concerns that were raised at the last hearing, and in that effort, we did have a, we set up a meeting at the library, to which we invited the neighbors, and we did have a meeting with some of the neighbors. We felt that it was very productive, there was a number of questions that were, were asked, and I can tell you that, if you let me run down those questions, I think that would be helpful. First of all, there was a question about delivery trucks, and tractor trailers, and things of that nature, and entering the site. We did agree that there would be, none of that traffic would, would enter or exit the site from the South Street entrance that is proposed on the plan. We also agreed that test runs for vehicles that are to be sold and tested from the site would also not be allowed to exit and enter from the South Street exit. They'd all come in and out at the Route 9 entrance and exit. There were questions about environmental questions, such as noise, what can they expect for noise? Well, first of all, there will be no outdoor speakers whatsoever, so you're not gonna hear any, anybody calling any salespersons, or anybody else, or any, or any customers of that nature. The, it's a state-of-the-art building, which, in which sound is a consideration. I do have an interior layout somewhere here, Patrick, maybe if you could show. It has a double-door setup, so that when service vehicles drive into the building, they, they come into a somewhat of an alcove, and then they go in through a second door, in order to avoid, avoid vehicles being worked on by an open doorway. This is also an air-conditioned building, it's fully HVAC building, it's state-of-the-art, as I say, so we would expect that the doors would remain closed most of the time in this building, both winter and summer. The, there was questions about battery storage, you know, with electric vehicles, and there are specific regulations, I think they're called KPA regulations, Mike can address that if, if he needs to further, but I would say that there are very specific manifesting requirements for batteries, and storage of batteries. It is a highly regulated industry, it's a highly regulated product, as I say, every battery has a specific manifest for it, it's, it's very similar to how you have to deal with waste oil and things like that, it's, it's, as I say, highly regulated. There was questions about blasting. I would note to you that we have done, our engineer has had done, some boring on the site, we do know that there will be some blasting, but we do not anticipate a great amount of blasting, Patrick can address that further if you have questions about it, but as you know, the fire department regulates blasting, and it's a specific permit that you get through the fire department, and there are survey requirements, anybody in the vicinity, within a certain perimeter of the site, is allowed to request that we do a survey of their home, to check for any kind of cracks, or any, any kind of issues at all, that could then later show up after blasting, for which we would be responsible. So, blasting, as I say, is, is, again, a separately regulated item, that is, in the parameters of the fire department. We were asked to consider buffering, maybe you want to, do you have the site plan at all? Are we able to use these boards all?
The TVs?
Yeah.
Yeah, you absolutely, you'd have to connect probably to your own device, though.
Yep, we got it. If I could have a second, so he can pull up those plans. We were asked to buffer, while he's setting up, okay, while he, while he's setting up. We were asked to consider buffering from, the neighbors over here, people would ask us if we would consider elongating and giving them a better buffer over here for, of trees, which we will be able to, and which we, and which we've agreed to do, Patrick can address that, if you, if he pulls up his plans. Trash pickup was a question, for many reasons, and for reasons I can't fathom, some trash companies pick up trash at 5:00 in the morning still, and bottom line is that it's not allowed in Shrewsbury, anyway, it, it's, it's a 7:00 time limit, these folks make sure that there is no trash pickup, or, or anything of that nature, before 7:30 in the morning. And, and along with that discussion comes the delivery trucks, again, I should note to you, as I did last time, I think, that the delivery trucks are owned by them, so if there's any issue with delivery trucks going in the wrong entrance, it won't happen again, because frankly, their job is on the line, that, that is a rule that they will make, and they will enforce. So they have their own delivery trucks, they don't, they're not serviced by outside delivery companies. With respect to the address of the property, for the purposes also of emphasizing the, our desire to make sure that it's not out of the Route 9 access, the address will be public, publicized as the Route 9 address, the Boston Turnpike address, which will be somewhere between 701 and 711, depends on what the assessor finally decides is, is going to be the address, and therefore, any Googling of this, of... And therefore, any Googling of this dealership or any GPS locationing of this dealership will lead them in through the Route 9 access. And that is based on experience. Patrick has experienced that down at Route 9 and Elm Street. Originally, they had Elm Street as their address, I think it was E3 Elm Street. And that caused people to come in through Old Mill Road and come up the back road down Elm Street and travel that way. They changed it to a Route 9 address, and it addressed a lot of those issues. And people started coming in based on their Googling of that address. Lighting will be all dark sky compliant. And these folks have a particular plan, in addition to the dark sky compliant lighting, they use a graduated de-lighting program once they close down at night. I believe they close down a third of their lights immediately. And so it brings the level of lighting down even further. They do obviously want to keep some lighting on the site for safety and for frankly, theft purposes. We want to make sure that there is security there. So there is a maintenance of a certain amount of light. But they are very sensitive to lighting on the site, and I think that that demonstrates it, that they make a commitment to downgrade the lights by at least one-third after closing. We do have our traffic engineer here, and we can talk a little bit about what she has and they have had done since the last time we were here. I'd like her to address that, but Patrick, do you want to address anything on the plans relative to what I've talked about in terms of the buffer, for one thing?
Yes, through the chair, I would just like to mention a change that we made after the meeting with the neighbors. So on the South Street, where the northern detention basin there is abutting South Street, we moved that further into the site so we can save a 20 to 25-foot buffer of natural vegetation along South Street to keep a separation of trees between the maple wood condominiums and the clearing that's necessary to construct that pond. So if you look at the hard copy of the plan there, you can see that would have been cleared right to the street line. And on this revised plan on the screen, you can see that on that eastern property boundary there, we were able to save natural buffer.
Actually, do you have a question I was going to ask about? So those are not existing wet areas, but retention ponds for drainage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, those are stormwater detention ponds.
Okay.
The wetland area is to the upper portion of the screen as you're looking at it.
Right, okay.
So there is a wetland just along Brentwood Drive where there's a couple of small coverts that go under into the larger wetland.
On the other side of the street, yeah, okay.
So if I could, through the chair, ask our traffic engineer to address what she has done since the last time we were here. And then we would look to address the, our requests after our neighborhood meeting and the peer review that we saw this afternoon.
Good evening. My name's Maureen McHugh. Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Maureen McHugh and McMahon Associates. We had completed the traffic analysis. We, at the last zoning board meeting, we didn't really have a chance to go over that, so I'd like to give a summary of our traffic assessment. It entailed data collection and a site visit effort. We collected things like speed data, existing lane and shoulder widths, existing signal timings, looked at crash data, coordinated with the town planning office to determine any site-specific growth as well as general growth rates for the area. We analyzed the existing traffic signal and the proposed site driveways. And we analyzed the existing signal based on the 2022 existing conditions and the traffic counts that were collected, the 2029 no-build conditions, which would include the growth rate for the area plus site-specific growth, but not this development. And then the 2029 build conditions, which would include all of the added growth plus this development. For the estimated new project trips, we follow ITE, it's the Institute of Transportation Engineers methodology. We followed land use code 840, which is for new auto sales and service center. ITE is a national research organization used by transportation professionals. They compile trip generation information for various land uses nationwide. In this case, the trips are expressed per square foot of building space. And since the last zoning board meeting, we had done some additional traffic data collection at the existing Patrick Subaru site further down the road on Route 9. And in instances, ITE is a planning tool, but when there is not a land use code that fits a specific site or the estimated trips do not reflect more local conditions, local data can be a useful tool to supplement ITE. And based on the data collected, the trips we found were significantly less at the existing Patrick Subaru site than what was shown for ITE based on the proposed site. These new trips were then distributed to the existing road network and traffic volumes. And based on the analysis, the current signal was found to operate at a level service E overall during, or better, during all of the peak hours. During the 2029 no-build conditions, again, without the proposed site project, the signal will continue to operate at overall level service E during all the peak hours analyzed. And during the 2029 build conditions with the added trips from this project, considered the intersection will continue to operate at a level service E or better during all of the peak hours analyzed. Based on this analysis, it shows that there's no significant impact to the operation of the existing signal based on the added trips from this project. Overall, I believe approximately seven seconds average delight per vehicle overall has been added as a result of added trips.
And if I could just ask her to address even extrapolating the increased size of the facility versus what you found at Patrick Motors?
Approximately probably less than half of what the proposed trips are showing for that Saturday that we counted. We counted on Saturday.
Okay. So we did have, as I say, the neighborhood meeting. We have seen what MDM has given you for preliminary discussion relative to the, their recommendations. What we would suggest to you is that we feel that we could live with a right turn in and a right turn out at South Street, if that's something that you would be amenable to. We would follow that through the planning board as well. Obviously, the planning board plans and the ZVA plans have to match. So if that is amenable to you, that would be what we'd be asking you to do. And if you did see fit to close the meeting tonight, this evening, we would be asking you to obviously condition our, your decision on that, which is that we bring you back a plan addressing these, this right turn out, right turn in only, and the added detention area buffer. And we feel that that would address those concerns. So I know I went through the categories of and requirements for zoning at the last meeting, so I didn't think it would be something you'd want to rehear again. If you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and we'd be happy to answer them.
Can't wait.
So Rowan, any updates that we should be aware of or additional info?
No, I'll just restate. In regards to the town's peer reviewer, obviously, the board received some preliminary or emailed statements that will be included in the final peer review letter. That's not coming out until tomorrow afternoon, though, however, so that's why we have, we've asked them to take out the portion relating back to the South Street access and give us, give us some recommendations. So as you can see, the recommendations that they have included is in their independent review of these traffic data and the initial, or the, excuse me, the traffic impact report done by the applicant, their recommendations, and this is our consultant, MDM Transportation, is to, at a minimum, they recommend restricting the right-in, right-out movements on South Street, or potentially removing and having a gated emergency access use only. So that is in front of the board, and at this point, I believe that's it. I know there was, just to kind of close the loop on something, there was a question about detention basins and whether those need to be held to the setbacks, excuse me, not setbacks, the use boundaries of this parcel. And there was a determination from town council that those are passive in nature and will not, do not need to meet the use and are able to go past that 30 feet. So it's a minor comment on that.
That was the first time I had ever heard that matter even discussed in a zoning concept.
That was one of my questions, actually, because this is a unique property. It has both residential and, so I was wondering if they would be restricted at all with the buffer and the basin.
Yeah, it is not the interpretation of town council that they would need to conform.
I would, if I could, Madam Chair, address just one other issue. I think it's important that you understand our rationale on South Street and Route 9. We feel strongly that, based on our first meeting with the various departments, that public safety is well-served by having both of those entrances. If there were ever an emergency that closed down Route 9 and fire trucks or emergency vehicles could not get in because there's no entrance at South Street, then that's a problem. And it goes both ways. So that's our rationale, basic rationale for suggesting to you that we could live with the right in and the right out. And I think that it, judging from what you've heard from our traffic engineer, I think that it's okay. It's an appropriate use. We're not making this intersection any worse. And it's really a public safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so board, comments, questions for the appellant? Kevin?
No, I guess just touching on what you were just bringing up in asking the question of how necessary is this? I can't remember if we asked that at the previous meeting. Obviously, it seems necessary from your standpoint to have two entrances, given if one entrance is incapacitated in some manner. And I am inclined to agree with our abstract comments that we've received in either making it a right turn in or out or emergency access only. I'd like to hear from you guys if you are completely opposed from emergency only, considering that seems to be your main concern, or it seems to be your goal to have the second one for emergency access. It seems like that's the biggest point. I mean, you obviously have other points of others being able to access the site regardless. But I do think if we can eliminate the left on either side, either coming in or going out, I think makes a huge difference, because then you don't have cars trying to cross traffic, which I think is the biggest point of concern. And the reason I ask is because it doesn't seem like it's not a main entrance, and you guys are okay with the address being on Route 9, which, as pointed out, in other situations helped reduce secondary traffic to a secondary entrance. So I guess, again, my question is, how important is it to have access through that portion of the site?
I would just like to add a note. Traffic-wise, I think the next place that motorists would be able to do a U-turn, so everyone, if no one was able to turn out of South Street, everyone would be turning right onto Route 9, and they'd have to go down to Lake Street to do a U-turn. So you'd have all that U-turning traffic. It's good to have diversification in entrances and exits. So all of that traffic that could turn out onto South Street to get to Route 9 would then have to go a mile down the road to Lake Street and do a U-turn.
And I think that if you were to put boots on the ground here, we're talking about someone driving down South Street, even coming from Brentwood, coming down South Street with their Subaru and then having the ease of turning in at South Street. That doesn't hurt anybody, and it doesn't harm anything whatsoever. It is important to have a couple of entrances and exits. There's no question about it. I think that it's quite important to my client. But I think we've come a long way, and I think that the fact is that, again, public safety-wise, it's important to have these open, and to have it gated, I don't think is a good idea. I would just respectfully disagree with that.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Peter?
I definitely see the value of having a second entrance, especially for public safety. I think if it were physically restricted to right turn in, right turn out, I think that would address most of the concerns that folks have, which I think is really just a left turn across the three lanes of traffic there. In an intersection, it's already a little bit tough. And I think it's worth noting that if you didn't have a second way in, you'd be forcing all of the traffic into one entrance, which might cause issues on Route 9. So it's, you know, plug the hole here, and it's got, and the traffic has to go somewhere else. So I'm satisfied that a right, a physically restricted right in, right out would probably address those issues. I'm glad to hear that you spoke with the neighbors about the buffer, and I think that is a great idea. We wouldn't be able to condition on the test drives point. Is that beyond our power, I'm thinking?
I think it is.
We can, we can.
We can do that?
I did consult with town council on all of those conditions, and he did feel that if the board felt that that was necessary as a granting of a special permit specifically under the use, that that would be allowable.
We're okay.
Yeah.
As an act.
And we're okay with that.
And you're okay with that? Yeah, so I think, you know, all of these things taken together, I think it's thoughtful and well-done, so that's all from me.
Thank you. And if you wanted to hear from our engineer relative to those physical barriers that they build into this type of right in, right out?
Oh, sure, can't hurt. Just how, what that looks like, how that works.
So we've all seen these little islands along Route 9 where we want to force cars to turn right, so it's a raised island with sloped granite edging. It meets the MASTOT standards.
Okay.
And it is a sloped granite, so that emergency vehicles can go over it, frankly. Frankly, that's what that's.
If a trailing tire needs to go over it, then there's, you know, accommodation for that.
Right.
It's the same thing as mimicked across the street at Price Chopper, I believe.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that one might be a vertical granite island, Madam Chair, but it would be similar to that, where it would be a concrete surface.
Lisa?
So I'm very happy to hear that you're open to making this right in, right out only. At our last meeting, we raised this intersection as an issue, particularly people coming out of Price Chopper and people coming out of your property at the same time going to make the same turn to the same direction. I was also very concerned with impact on Route 9. So as people are coming off Route 9, making a left into your property, I just see that as a real safety issue, knowing the current conditions of that property, of that intersection. So very happy to see that. I too am a fan of two forms of egress for safety reasons, so I, I'm not opposed to, or how do I want to say it? I'm not willing to restrict that South Street exit and entrance to emergency vehicle only. I don't personally think that's necessary. I was, I was wondering if you would come back with moving that street farther, I guess it's nor, yeah. Yeah, farther north, I guess, and you can't win, no matter what you do.
You can't.
Yeah, go ahead.
You can't win, but I would note that this intersection was actually designed by MDM, wasn't it, Patrick? The, the.
Price Chopper.
And when they put the Price Chopper in, they put the curb cut directly across the intersection, so.
The curb cut for this lot.
For this lot, yes.
Yeah.
And I'm told by our engineer that that is best practices.
Yes, sure, not well-intentioned.
Move it down the street is only, is only kind of changing.
All it does is, which is, I think, important, is alleviate the possibility of the Route 9 problem. The turning off Route 9 onto South Street and boom, you're stopped. And now we're affecting Route 9. And I will say, the, your comment, Ms. McHugh, about, you know, now those leaving the property will need to go out to.
will need to go out to the Route Nine exit. Yes, they will have to do a U-turn at the Lake Street, or they can get off on Route 140 and turn around, or they could take some other side street, but that will be, there'll be multiple places they could go instead of this bottleneck.
Sure, yeah.
Here. So I'm just a little worried about that. And as you've seen, we already have a problem with the, the fact that South Street was extended to two lanes. It alleviated an old problem, and people were finding other ways around that. Now that we've fixed that problem, more people are using that road.
That's whack-a-mole.
So, and now you're left with having to deal with it. So, anyway, I'm very happy that you're doing this. And the conditions that I, I've, I want to, I've listed, based on what you've said with the conversation with the neighborhood, I'm wondering, Ms. McAllister, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of these, if we can't list them as conditions, but one is that delivery trucks and trailers are not allowed to use the South Street entrance. That will be now right in only, even though that you're.
Yep.
You're planning to change this, they still will not be able to use that. Another condition is that test drives must use Route Nine exit and entrance. Also, I mentioned this at the last meeting, I don't know if we can include this in the conditions, but I know other dealerships that they restrict test drives to Route Nine only, and using, doing a U-turn to come back and not using side streets. So, other dealerships go that far. I don't know if you're willing to do that. Another condition is no outside speakers. Another condition is that lighting must be dark sky compliant. And then lastly, the, there may be others, but the, what are we calling it? Pike wa, Pike Way? Be right turn in, right turn out only on South Street.
Physically restricted.
Physically restricted to those.
Oh, and the vegetative buffer.
Oh, and the, yes, thank you.
I think, I think that's everything, right?
I think so. But those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ann?
So, thank you for that presentation. I share Lisa's concerns, and I am very, very concerned about the safety of the South Street, proposed South Street entrance and exit. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the peer, the excerpt of the peer review study that we received this afternoon, but I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the queues. The peer review in the second paragraph says that review of queues extending from the Route Nine signal were conducted in October, October twenty, twenty twenty-two using video-based recordings. So, did your study look into the queues at all?
It did. It was based on our synchroanalysis. So what they were saying in their peer review is they went out and confirmed that our analysis was correct in how it was being presented, based on actual video documentation.
Okay.
It's included, we have a queue table, it's in one of the appendices of our original traffic impact study.
So, you know, if you took a look at it, the, the peer reviewer reaches a, a different conclusion, I think, you know, that it, the proponent should reconsider the need for South Street, given, South Street access, given the availability of a more prominent commercial driveway along Route Nine. So, I'm wondering, how do we reconcile these two positions?
I think we interpreted that more as not, no longer allowing lefts in and lefts out, that, that the right in, right out would resolve that comment.
Does, does, allowing right in, right out affect the queues at all?
It would, any rights out, it's an internal queue. Lefts in, obviously, they, there is space to queue up on the northbound side of South Street a little bit. There's a hatched gore area where cars could pull into that, and northbound vehicles could continue, but they have to wait for a gap in traffic. If you're waiting in the site, you would be waiting in the site, and it's an internal queue that's held up to the site. They would make a right turn into the, the lane, once there's an available gap in traffic.
Okay.
And that hatched area would not be used, used under this scenario.
Can you go left?
Right.
Can't go left, right.
Right.
Left turns are generally the more critical movement, right turns tend to not be as much of an issue.
Right, yeah, I just, I'm very, very familiar with that Price Chopper entrance and exit, and it's a challenging intersection. And to put more, more danger and more complexity there, and I'm still questioning that. What would be the hardship if there were an emergency-only entrance there on Route Seven? What would be the hardship to Patrick Subaru?
Well, not being able to use a commercial driveway in a commercial zone, for one thing. I think you restrict everything to a Route Nine access, and I do think that, that, that could pose problems down the road in terms of traffic issues on Route Nine, emergency issues on Route Nine. You know, there have been, as we know, there have been some serious accidents on Route Nine itself that have closed down that road at times. And, you know, if there was ever a issue in, in the site itself, I think that access would be important on, on South Street.
I wonder if I could also just suggest, I'm not convinced that getting rid of the South Street entrance and exit would actually help traffic at that intersection. Let's say you're coming down South Street to the south, and you're trying to enter Patrick Subaru. If you don't have that entrance on South Street, you're going to wait in line for the right-hand turn onto Route Nine. So, you're just going to clog that up even more. You're going to have even longer queues, whereas if the people that are trying to get into Patrick can make that right-hand turn ahead of time, you're going to take those cars out of the queue.
Right.
So, I, I think it might actually improve the situation to have, to have more than one way in and out. And, and as the engineer mentioned, half the queue is going to be internal to the site.
When you're coming out of the, the.
If you're turning right.
Yeah, right. You're queued in on the site.
Right, and so it's, it's not going to affect the traffic situation at all.
To answer your question, Ann, I'm going to make an attempt using the traffic impact study. So it looks like about, and I don't know how you determined how many will leave each entrance, maybe you just.
We, we use.
There's a formula.
Trafficking, traffic volumes and, and the site location to basically distribute traffic, generally.
So I'm, I'm, I'm at the site, and I, now I can choose to leave, and depending, if I came from one direction, you'd assume I'd take that exit that's nearest to that. So right now, it looks like about half of those who visit the site will go out the Route Nine way, and half will go out the South Street way, making a left turn, something like that. So you can look at these, and the, the, those, half of those people who would have made a left out of Pike Way will now have to go out down, sorry, out Route Nine. I don't know what that would do to your business. I still think people would still want to come to the dealership. It's not like Price Chopper, where they come every day, maybe twice a day for some of us. So I don't know. I don't, I don't think it would impact it that much, making this a right turn in, right turn out only.
I think that's a key point, actually, too, that the level of use that you'd expect to see for a car dealership is a tiny fraction of what you'd expect for, say, another grocery store, or something else that has huge volumes. So I, I think we can debate it, but I'm not sure that.
I mean, I was talking.
That we're debating very much.
Yeah, I was talking to Mike Donahue today, who, as you know, does a, a fair amount of this work. And he was, he reminded me that he had, at one point in the past, permitted a hotel here.
Yeah.
And there, and we also have a plan that was done previously for this parcel that was a shopping center.
Yeah.
We also know that, that, you know, we're seeing one hundred ninety-six apartments being built on five acres of land, never mind twenty-five acres.
Yeah, right.
In this town. I mean, the demand is there. The demand is there. I frankly, and honestly, I suggest to you respectfully, that you couldn't have a better use for this particular site, that, that keeps it in a reasonable, it keeps the, you know, the effect down to a reasonable level.
Or an economically sustainable use that would have a lower impact on traffic at this intersection.
Absolutely. Impact is everything.
Yeah. That's, that's sort of where I'm landing on it.
So sorry, Ann, did you have more comments?
No, I have my issues resolved.
I have just one other question. Deliveries, where are they originating from? Is it a set location? They going to come from one specific direction, every delivery, or is it from all over the place?
Kevin Michael Clummy from Subaru, New England, Vice President, is all the deliveries come in from North Kingston or Rhode Island. Subarus come in on ships from Japan. They come in from rail, and they go from Western, they brought to us in North Kingston. They're all accessorized, they're all loaded, and they're all brought by our car carriers. The Peterbilt's, the oldest one is five years old, and I just ordered three more, and I got three coming in March. And they're the nicest trucks on the street, I can guarantee you that. The nicest car carriers, I want to say. You can't find a better car carrier. But they all start in North Kingston. All the drivers been with us, we don't sub it out at all. They're delivered at the timeframe we ask them to deliver them to, and they'll, they'll deliver them on the site where we have it, where we want them to be delivered, but they all come from North Kingston.
Okay.
And we own the company that delivers the cars. It's not like, we've had Toyota, Honda, Mr. B.C., multiple dealerships, and we have no control over the trucks at all. In this scenario, we have full control over it.
Okay. No, the reason I asked for your information and for the board was if we conditioned that as a no delivery, which, based on this answer, I think we could, still can do, not that I think it makes much of a difference if they're coming from Rhode Island, is that I would hate to have them come from the north, for whatever reason, and then have to have the truck on South Street sitting at that light, which then, needing to take a right to get onto Route Nine to then get into your property, but assuming they're coming from the north, they're going to come 140, or up 495 onto Route Nine, I would assume.
Yeah, that's what I would.
146.
146, sorry.
290.
Right, so I didn't want to make a hardship by, a, a different hardship that we didn't see. So thank you, I appreciate that.
So, Madam Chair, if I could just add, the way I envisioned the site when I designed it was that the trucks would be coming from either the south or the east, would enter the site, and would go back out South Street to go back south or east. So if you were restricting the trucks to only use their Route Nine entrance, that they would have to go east, and then, I'm sorry, west, and find a way to turn around to get back to Route Twenty or 495. So, you know, in designing the site, we tried to leave all the paths of maneuvers open for deliveries, for trucks, for customers. You know, the more we restrict it, the more we're focusing all of the traffic into one particular location, which isn't necessarily the best thing to do.
But that would, a right in, right out, though, wouldn't cause an issue with that, as far as the trucks getting back out to go to the south and the east?
A right out would allow them to get back to 49.
To Route Nine, yeah. So, restricting them to not use the South Street is perhaps not a good idea, but that came from the neighborhood discussion, correct? But that was when it was a, a full intersection.
That is true.
Yeah, so revisit that.
Yeah, we'll hear what the public has to say.
And we were talking, and we were talking generally, including trash trucks and things like.
Yeah, sure.
No trucks.
Okay. Mary Beth?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm looking at it and saying, twenty-five acres, what else could it be? Let's just pretend that we all get disgusted with this whole thing, and you walk away. And, you know, it could happen, it's happened. And I just think, you know, this is a low impact on what is a difficult site. And I also am looking at the schematics here and there, and it's beautiful, I mean, it's beautifully designed, it's a reputable company. I think that I'm hearing the desire to be a part of our community, which is really important to us, the respect for all the neighbors. So I really applaud you for taking the time to have a meeting with the neighbors. I am very curious to hear any new comments from the neighbors when we open it up for public discussion, but I think that the concern that I have is sort of the added peer review traffic study that we just received, you know, an hour and a half ago, does vary a bit from what we're hearing. But after hearing all of the discussion around the pros and cons, I think if we do, we have a lot of work to do in terms of conditions, which I hope Lisa's taking copious notes on.
She is.
So I, I guess what I would say is, I, I would like to reserve the right to further comments after we hear from the audience, if there is anything beyond what we've already discussed. But I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I think a lot of the conditions that we're referring to, particularly the right turn in and out, is really the only answer, in my mind. So I appreciate that you're open to that. And certainly all the lighting and noise and all of those things certainly have addressed the concerns of a lot of the neighbors' comments.
We, we, if I could also, there was one issue that we did not necessarily address, and that is, at least one of the neighbors wanted us to put a fence up on the back of the property, at the top of the slope, behind those parking spaces. We frankly didn't see the need for that unless the building department requires it, because we feel that there's a sufficient amount of woods behind that, that property that it just doesn't make sense for the expense of getting a fence company up there, never mind, you know, working in an area where you're trying to leave trees. So, we, we kind of pushed back on that issue alone.
Can you confirm how many feet of a buffer that, that is already in the, somewhere around what?
The green, the green portion of the forest.
The forest?
Yeah.
Behind it? Oh, yeah, I can't, I'm, I'm looking at.
I can't read it, yeah.
I could just zoom in a little bit.
It's hard to tell. Well, where's the scale?
So the, the nearest point of the building to the rear property line.
Oh, yes.
You can see my arrow right there.
Eight hundred and thirty-three.
This one is three hundred and ninety-nine feet, so even if we take, at, at the low end, half of that.
Yeah.
There's a minimum of two hundred to two hundred fifty feet of woods.
Thanks.
Remaining between the property line and the edge of clearing.
Thank you. We don't typically do that, so.
Okay, let's move things along. If it is a public hearing, I know that we've received lots of correspondence from so many abutters, so I'd ask if there's any commentary from the audience that might be new information, or please stand, identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Carol Barton, I live at thirty Brentwood Drive. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. We neighbors did not receive the peer review, so we have no idea what it says. We're going before the planning board Thursday night, so it would be nice if we could get a copy of it.
Just to be clear, we have not received it either. We have an extract of the peer review that is due into our office by tomorrow.
Because as you can imagine, that is our biggest, main concern. So, we, we're really concerned about the entrance and exit on South Street. The second issue, I'm a little surprised by Attorney Richard Ricker's representation regarding the fence. I was the abutter who was asked about the fence. They, at our review meeting, said yes, they would do a fence, they jokingly called it the Carol Fence, that they wanted to.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Okay. Let's, go ahead, Carol.
Okay, so apparently my impression was quite different, so. And then, the other, I'm just curious, I'm the person who raised the issue about the thirty-foot encroachment, when you've got the two different zonings, you're allowed to go thirty feet in. I'm an estate planning attorney, I live and die by the Internal Revenue Code, so that's, I love reading regulations. So I'm just really curious how town council came to that conclusion? So, if that's possible to share his opinion, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just curious, because the regulation on page twenty-three simply says it can go in thirty feet. And I couldn't find an exception within the zoning bylaws. I shared with Attorney Richard Ricker back in November seventeenth, asking if he could direct me to an answer, so.
And I said I couldn't, because I couldn't find one. I couldn't, I had never researched that issue. And, and I deferred to planning, who said that they were. And, and I deferred to planning, who said that they were researching it.
Okay, Rowan?
So I'll answer, so the, in regards to the peer review, I completely understand, you know, this came in last minute. It is public record, so you are able to request what, exactly what we're seeing. But the full peer review report will be posted on the planning board website, hopefully as soon as we get it tomorrow afternoon. So you'll be able to access it there as well.
Thank you.
And also email the planning department requesting it specifically and I'll send it right to you.
Thank you very much.
Definitely didn't mean to, you know, it's, it's completely a public document that you can absolutely take.
Okay.
And, and for the record, I've also given them everything that we've, we've had. I, I sent them everything from, from our files as well, so, I mean.
And you don't have that yet either?
No, we don't have it either.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Sir?
My name is Henry Bergassie, I live at 100 Francis Avenue in Shrewsbury. I've been there since 1978. So I remember the cows at Weagle Farm. Okay, and so do my kids. Anyway, I've seen the area grow and I think the town is great for the expansion. The problem that we're looking at is the South Street is a bypass for the center of town. And if you go walking down there 4:30 in the evening or 3:30 or 5 o'clock, you swear they didn't slow down coming off of Route nine. Okay? I live on Francis Avenue, so I get the overflow from South Street. And there are some significant speeders there. Now, the police have done a pretty good job of putting up a, a little sign there. But as I come down and I pass it, it goes right back up to 45 in a 35 mile an hour zone. So my point is that that becomes a bypass for the center of town. As a result of that, people are taking that right and haven't quite slowed down yet. Coming out of Price Chopper is a chicken fight. Okay? Because they keep creeping out because there's a blind spot there.
Yeah.
So the nose of the car is right out in front of northbound traffic on South Street. If you put the South Street exit where I see it now, and I apologize, I, I've just got involved in this because they just found out about it. Normally, this doesn't bother me, the development. But my kids visit us, my wife drives, we go to Price Chopper. There's been an ugly accident there many times. In fact, that rail's been replaced several times that I know of. And I'm afraid we're going to be involved in one of them. So that little exit there and entrance onto South Street, right only, perfect improvement. Okay? You're going to get people coming in, get their car serviced. 5:30, they're going to pick it up because they get out of work. They're going to go across the street to Price Chopper to pick up something for dinner. You're going to have directed traffic going right. Coming out of Price Chopper, you got directed traffic going left or right. So they're not a straight shot, they're one of these things. But then you also got people coming in at 45 miles an hour coming off of Route nine. This problem exists 7:30 in the morning till about 8:30, 9 o'clock. And it exists from about 3:30 in the afternoon to 5:30. That's the same time that most people drop off their cars or pick up their cars for repair and service. So I'm, I don't want to, I'm not trying to kill the project, that's not my intention, nor would I be able to. But that little entrance onto South Street, if you jogged it down a little bit.
North.
You would force the right only, who wants to go to Price Chopper to pick up some food for dinner, to take the right and then take the left and blend into the traffic. If you made that entrance on Route nine a little wider and divided it with the same type of structure that you're going to put on South Street, but not a directional, or you could make a directional. You could have one entrance for service and trucks, and you can have another entrance for customers and service. So they come in on Route nine. Now, what does this do to Route nine traffic? If you remember the Route nine, Route 20 intersection, when they put up the mall with BJ's down in Northborough? If you came off of Route 20 and tried to go east on Route nine, you were playing chicken again. Because they had a stop sign there. And there were some real ugly accidents that happened. So what happened? They put up a yield sign. That didn't work, people don't read yield to any letters. Okay? So what happened was they built an extra lane going up, they put a yield sign. Now you can get out into the traffic and you can see traffic coming. The other advantage that this would have over that situation is the traffic that's coming down the hill is stopped at a light or has full visibility of the traffic in front that's going up the hill. So if anybody's coming in to go into the dealership and they're on the right, traffic coming down would see them. Also, the going uphill, it's a lot easier to avoid a collision than going downhill. And there's no blind spots. So again, just to back up, my recommendation would be, based on what I've seen from cows to Price Chopper to everything else going on, move that entrance back, offset it. Don't put it directly across Price Chopper. All you need is one of these once and you've got yourself a fatality potentially. Over here on Route nine, double up the entrance. So your trucks have to go through that intersection. They're going to come from 146. They're going to go up to 290, and they're going to come through the center of town. Okay, so there's more traffic there. And then when they finish with all the expansion over West Bylston, we got, we should put a traffic, a separate traffic lane for trucks on 140. That's going to happen. 495 is where they want to come from. And if they do that, they got the light in their favor. Direct the traffic, once it's on land, servicing trucks go around back, customers go around front. I think that should be considered a little, it's not so much the concentration of traffic, or it is, the concentration, not so much the volume of traffic, as it's the gradient of traffic over time or different, different time slots. And you can see it, I mean, when you're there. That would be my recommendation, that's what I would request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Comments, questions? Okay?
I'm Li Jianyu.
Will we ask for your name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm Li Jianyu, I live in 29 Brentwood Drive. Thank you very much, you, the presentation and you made effort to make it right, right in, right out only. And I've been, I went to the previous community meeting earlier with you guys. And I think, I've been thinking about that solution and I think it's true that a lot of people still will come and they will, they find, oh, can I do left turn? Well, first of all, technically, how would we make sure people don't do left turn into the dealer? And if it's a right, opposite Price Chopper, then they, they will think, I'm not, I'm not doing left turn, I'm going to a position. So people will still do the turn, I think it's very hard. Or you could physically put something higher so they cannot turn. But then it will block, people come out of the Price Chopper, so they will hit that block. It's pretty hard to engineer, I think, if it, the exit is across the Price Chopper, right? So the other thing is a lot of people will find that they cannot turn, they will go to neighborhoods to do the turn, so the traffic will still back up and. So I think the probably, another solution is they can add a, a lane to, for the left turn only. So they expand one lane, so when they go in there, they need, need to take a left turn, they can take their lanes, it won't block up anything. So they, then they can take a turn and the car won't be jammed up all the way to Route nine, create an unsafe situation. It's my, my suggestion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Wow, we can't close.
Oh, we can't close, sorry.
I did want to make a comment about, so. Attorney Ricker, you mentioned if we wanted to make a decision tonight. We haven't read the peer review traffic report, so we definitely need to do that. So we can't make a decision tonight, is that a problem continuing until?
Well, that's your prerogative, you, you guys are the bosses.
Just want to hear that. So I think it's unlikely that we would be able to make a decision without reading that full report.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got a report, you know, I think a lot of the communication that we've gotten from the neighbors is they wanted to see another report. And we have that report, we just haven't had time to review it. Certainly.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get it tomorrow.
And the design of a new exit onto South Street, is that something you would be presenting to us? Or no? We just, will you be updating your site plan with that change?
The site plan would obviously have to have the addition of data on it relative to right turn only.
Okay.
Right turn in, right turn out. So that's, that would be in addition to the site plan. The physical.
Yeah.
Items that we talked about, I guess they would show up in the site plan, right, Patrick?
Yes, we have not been to planning board yet, through the chairs.
Okay, good.
Which is the first.
Technical review to go through.
Yep.
Expect to include all these things on the technical plans.
Right.
That will be reviewed by the.
So it's not unreasonable to have that updated by our next zoning board meeting?
Madam Chair, Lisa, we had Michael Clummy from Subaru New England. I've been building these all over New England. Spent quite a bit of money right here. Time is of the essence, this thing is going, it's your supply chain. If people want to see it, I'd like to see if you could put a vote out tonight. If you don't want to see it, Mr. Buck, it's my brother-in-law, we've owned this property for a year, we've worked very hard with the engineers, we've worked hard with the attorneys. We have our phone blowing off the, off the wall. Major developers, condos, malls, 40Bs. We don't want to do that. We want to do a good project like I'm doing, I'm doing the same project down in Milford, Connecticut. Called down to Milford, Connecticut, talked to all the planners down there, they love us. Six, 56,000 square foot building, they love us. Called the town of Norwood, talked to Mark Schubert, talked to Helen Don, your chairman of the board of selectmen. We say we're going to do something, we're going to do it. All this costs money and time. I've spent it, I've brought all the neighbors in. If you want to see it, please vote for it. If you don't want to see it, don't vote, vote against us. And we'll have to find another site to move Patrick Subaru. And then when we find another site, we'll have to come back, maybe it might not be in Shrewsbury, you won't have us. But we will sell the land and we'll, you can sell somebody else in front of you. I mean, we've done everything we've said, we were here last month, we did everything here. Yes, you have different opinions with a, with a, with a, with a traffic review. I've got a professional woman right here, she's asked, answered all your questions. We met with all the neighbors. They asked us to go ahead and, and close it right down. Some of the neighbors were okay, left out, left in. We've done what the neighbors asked. I go ahead and I just drove down Route Shrewsbury, and I'm going to tell everyone on this board, I'm going to tell everyone in this room, it's the most beautiful dealership to be in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I'm going to be spearheading the project as I am tonight. It's going to be $3 million worth of site work out there. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, we'd like to move forward. We're going to go in front of the planning board. When we go to the planning board, we're going to tell them. We sat in front of this board, we told you this, this, and this. And I'm going to guarantee you, I'm going to do everything this team that I've built here in your lovely town of Shrewsbury, which it is, that we will do it. We'll go back and make these changes for the planning board as you suggested, you're making a condition. We can't build it if you do a condition right in, right out. I've, I've agreed to it. I take every light pole, I wire them directly, just in case someone's living in their living room, their dining room. And the, the light is a dark skylight, but you can still see a light across the street. I don't like that light. You call me up, 781-389-3100, and I fix the light. This is what we do. I've got a great reputation, I've built all over New England. This, this is, I, I, I can't believe it was on ecstatic about this development right here. If you're not, I'd like to ask you to vote tonight. If you want us in Shrewsbury, fine. If you, if you don't, if you vote tonight, you vote against us, I'm going to take my stuff, I'm going to go, we'll find someone else to sell the land too, we'll move on. But I'd like the board to, to vote for this this evening. I've been here, I've done what you asked last month. Yes, you don't want to go left in, left, I've, I've agreed to that. You have to make a decision. I have a traffic engineer right here, you can read all the reports you want, she's telling you. It's, it's not going to bring any more traffic to that site, i, i, it's a great development. If we keep chasing it and chasing, I mean, let me go for the planning board. Do what your power has in front of you, decide if you want to vote for us. If you don't want to vote for it tonight, don't vote for it.
So I'll just, I'll just add.
I, I can't understand it.
So I'm, I apologize that, for my comment, but I'm, I'm, what, we may be totally in favor of this. I know, I would love to, I would love to. What we're struggling with is we have to write the conditions when we approve. And we, we've heard some, I'm trying to understand what they are. We have not had the liberty of reviewing our peer review traffic report to make sure the conditions we write in our approval are what we need them to be. So it's not a matter of not liking this project or not. It's, we want to do the right thing and we want to make sure it's clear in our conditions. So you could continue on with your process through site plan review and everything else. So.
And so, excuse me, just, I'm going to pay the team to come back. And you're going to read that review.
I understand.
I'm going to ask the board then, I want the peer review here and I want to know why, and want them to be here next meeting.
Mr. Clummy?
I want them here though.
Mr. Clummy?
I'm chairperson, I will.
You can't vote tonight, you, you just tell me, if people don't want me in Shrewsbury, I don't understand it.
I was just going to say, I think you have a pretty supportive board here. And I'd hate to have you snatch defeat from the jaws of victory.
Hey, too, that phone number works, by the way. We'll be calling it tomorrow.
It was 50 people here. And so if you're concerned about, let me, Madam Chair, if she's concerned about the traffic report review, right, if she's concerned about that, I want those people at the next meeting, and I don't want to go left in and left out, I want to go for the whole ball of wax, and I want to go left in and left out.
So I, I think we're talking ourselves really quickly out of a decision that could have.
Could have happened.
Could have easily happened tonight.
Yeah.
We're trying, we are really trying, listen, we, we all live in this community, we all want the right thing. You have a beautiful project here, would we like to move it to another town? So we didn't have to deal with this? Absolutely, we'd love to have open space. That is not going to happen, so hear me out. We are trying to do what is requested of us as a board. And I think we are trying to talk and, and assimilate all the information that we just got in the last two hours, frankly. So we're trying to do the best we can.
And that's not your fault.
And for our community, that is not your fault. I also recognize that you have to go in front of planning, which is a whole other, you know, process, which I believe the meeting is December 1st.
Correct.
This week. We know you are ready to go, you have, you have made that very, very clear. And you have brought in the best of the best to give us everything we need to make a decision with. I think what would be fair is if we sort of talk amongst ourselves as a board about how we're feeling, whether we condition or whether we proceed forward with a continuation to get more information, but I think we need to hear from the board.
Who wants to go first?
Who wants to go first on that one?
I, I could walk the plank. I was ready to vote for it tonight, but I, I just. You know, these procedures exist for a reason. This is our community and you want to do business here, and the public has a right to be heard, and they have a right to the information that they receive, that the town is paying for, whoever is paying for to get a peer review. I honestly think that the report that we'd receive tomorrow wasn't going to change my decision. But I don't understand how you can come in here and say you're such a good corporate citizen and then come in here and demand a decision tonight, or say you're going to take your marbles and leave. I find that on the behalf of the public to be a little bit offensive, sir. However, I am.
Peter, I'm very sorry if you felt that way. What I'm, what I'm, what I meant to say, maybe I didn't say it the right way. I've got a team here, they cost a lot of money. I was here 30 days ago, I had to pay the peer review. Why does he go up two hours before? That's not fair, fair to me as an applicant.
No, certainly.
But I was a professional right here, and I'm not, I'm just, I'm saying I've done everything the board's asked. Because the peer review that the town hired is going to hold me up, my team costs me more money, just keep costing money. If they want something, tell me, and, and I didn't threaten anything, I just says, if you want something, tell me what you want. Your peer review was 30 days ago, Peter.
I understand.
And he gives two hours before, that's not fair to me as an applicant.
I understand the frustration, my point is just that the.
Ms. Clummy?[1785.41] No, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, we are really getting out of control here and we, we want, we want to help you. You're not helping yourself right now. So let us talk amongst the board and let us decide how we want to proceed. Lisa.
So, given the information I've been able to read so far, which is not the peer review traffic report, um, I, and, and the applicant's willingness to change the South Street entrance and exit to right turn in, right turn out only. I am, I am ready to approve this. My problem is I need, I need to read that report to know how to condition this. I'm pretty clear on everything, seven or six conditions. Um, normally we have conditions prepared for us as well after we have heard enough public comment and have heard from the appellant a couple of times, which we have now, we're now at. We have those conditions prepared, we review whatever else, we review everything again and then we make our ruling. So I would prefer to continue to the next December hearing. I'm, I apologize, yes, that's going to cost money. And I do agree with you that the peer reviewer should have been here this evening. Or, um, and it would have been too late for you to decide to continue it and not have your expensive, um, board with you right now. So I apologize for that. It's unfortunate, um, but that traffic, that peer review, um, is very important for us to read. Um, now, my question about changing the site plan and whatnot, I know you're going to have to do that anyway. Will you need to do that for our decision on, in December if it gets continued to, to then? Um, no, you don't need that for me.
We'll be doing it for the, for the planning board anyway.
Okay, well, that's, oh, December first, okay. Um, so I, I prefer to continue until December and I apologize for that, but that's what I need to feel comfortable about approving this and understand our position as well. When we approve or deny something, it can then be appealed and it costs the town and our residents and their tax dollars a lot of money to go through that legislative process. So I'm just trying to avoid that as well.
Right.
That's it. But I am very pleased with this project. I think it's an ideal location.
Likewise.
Maybe the butters don't, but I think this is perfect. My only concern was the safety issues with that South Street exit and the price shopper situation. I think this is fantastic and I'm very happy to have you stay in Shrewsbury.
Thank you.
Anne?
So I would vote to continue for the following reasons. Um, the neighbors have articulated and I have personally observed that traffic and safety are a very big problem at this intersection to the point where, and you can't know this, Mr. Clemmie, a young woman who is twenty years old was killed. Um, a pedestrian was killed there within the last six weeks. I can't, I can't say that I'm not interested in reading the rest of the peer review to save you some money. And, and I truly appreciate the fact that you've brought this beautiful project to Shrewsbury. My family owns three Patrick Subarus and will probably buy more, will continue to be
I have one too.
Royal patron of Patrick Subaru, so that really has nothing to do.
Traffic has it there today.
Right, so, but I can't sit here and say, well, we got to save you a little bit of money and we won't read the rest of the peer review. Um, I, and for that reason, I think it's very important that we continue this.
But it's just not right for the peer review to come to last.
But we're at a disadvantage as well, sir, sir. Please be respectful.
Yeah, I'm very respectful.
All right.
Well, we are all volunteers here and we do the best that we can to be prepared. We even stopped what we were doing today to read the excerpt during our workdays. So please be respectful of that.
I'm, I'm totally, I'm very sorry, I'm very sorry, I'm very respectful.
Mr. Clemmie, can I please ask you to let our board discuss how we're going to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Kevin?
No, I agree with what's been stated previously. Um, I think if paperwork had been done in a timely fashion and we had our exhibits, uh, done in a clerical way where we could feel comfortable with them being on paper and not handwritten notes, I think you'd have your yes vote tonight. Um, but I agree with continuing, just so that we can have our ducks in a row, we need to do our due diligence. You guys have done your due diligence, which we greatly appreciate. And I think based on these comments, you guys know which way this is going to go. So please, we just need the time to get ourselves in a position where we feel comfortable that there's not going to be any further issues if we were to vote tonight.
I have, um, a housekeeping question for you, Rowan. We had, um, no December meeting planned, so that would require us to arrange our schedule for a December meeting.
Let's do it.
Clear on that. Um, so, Mr. Clemmie, we are going to take time, which we were not going to have a meeting, but if we decide to continue that, we are going to continue it to a December meeting. Just want to be clear on that. Um, and, and that's our time and we all work full-time jobs and this is a voluntary position that we're in. We want you to succeed. We want you to build this beautiful, beautiful, we know it's going to be beautiful. We want that to happen, but we have to go through the procedure to be fair to you and to be fair to our constituents, our, our community. So that's what I'm going to say. Um, I think continuing for three weeks is what we, I think as a board are agreeing to do. Um, so I'd like to, um,
Nineteenth.
Yes.
Were you just going to ask for a motion? I didn't mean to.
Um, I was going to ask you for a date in December, first of all.
Sure, I can do that too.
December nineteenth, our old date that we were going to have, right?
Yeah.
So, right.
Okay.
And was there something else that you wanted to comment on?
Um, I just maybe wanted to provide kind of a high-level overview if
Sure.
Um, or not even overview, timeline, however, just to recognize what staff will be doing, I guess, between now and then, so that we can all be on the same page as a board. Um, I will be drafting the decision, because you are not closing, you will not be closing the, the public, um, hearing tonight. So you'll, you'll be continuing, I'll be drafting conditions, I can work with the applicant, you know, make sure that everyone is comfortable with the conditions as written. It gives us a little bit more time.
Similar to the planning board process.
Similar to the planning board process. Um, because it's still an open meeting, you can still accept the peer review, you can still accept the changes to the plan. Um, I know, Ms. Sett, you, you don't need those to make your determination. I do know that our zoning enforcement officer always likes to see final plans with your decisions.
I would love it, but.
So if, you know, if that's a possibility for, for the December hearing, um, perhaps the board can consider that. That would be helpful for your decision as well, so. Is there anything else that the board would need from staff to prepare for your, your determination in, in December?
That's all I need.
I think we are all on the same page and.
Do all, are all these members available on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Oh, can you?
No, I, I'm sorry, I was trying to lighten the air around here. Um, we'll be here.
Merry Christmas, are you going to serve?
All right.
Perhaps.
All right, so are we ready for a motion to continue?
Let's get a motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue the hearing for seven oh one and seven thirteen Boston Turnpike for a special permit, I don't, do I have to go into all that?
I will if you want.
For a special permit section six, table one, to locate a sales room for automobiles and a garage and repair shop and a variance to section seven, table two, to park inventory and display vehicles with a non-conforming setback to the December nineteenth ZBA meeting at six thirty PM.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
No.
Right.
Can we request the peer reviewer to be there?
Okay.
And the appellant may get December nineteenth.
Okay.
Come on, come on, come on.
Okay.
I'll talk to, I'm going to defer to the chair on that matter.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am chair lady.
I know we, I know we probably can't force them, but if we can at least make the request.
All right, onto our new business.
Thank you very much.
I don't know.
Thank you, we'll see you then, three weeks.
Uh, next on our list is to discuss and vote on determination for proposed changes at the Point at Hill Farms comprehensive permit.
Fran is here.
Rowan, who do we have here?
We have Fran.
Thanks for sticking around.
He's waiting.
Um, can I ask us to take the discussions outside of the room, please? We have a, a meeting to conduct here.
You might have to say it louder again, the people in the back.
Give them a second.
Another chair?
Yep.
Excuse me, can I ask everyone to take their discussions outside? We have to continue with the, uh, the meeting, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. And how's everyone this evening?
Very good.
Good. So why are we here?
So first of all, Raimi Schneider, Wind Development Company, I'm joined with
Stephanie Stein with Wind Development Companies.
Stephanie Kiefer from Smolik and Vaughn.
Liz Clark from Beals and Thomas.
Thank you.
And Fran.
Fran.
Fran's ready as well with Urban Smart Growth. So we're here today, we've been working closely with Rowan and Town Council to review some proposed, uh, minor modifications to the comprehensive permit. Just a brief update, we submitted a, um, an application to DHCD back in October, sorry, September for, um, low-income housing tax credits and we should be hearing back on that application
Momentarily, yeah.
Any day now. Um, we know that they were flooded with applications, so it's taken them a little bit more time than initially anticipated. That said, we think that the minor modifications that we've requested are consistent with the drawings that we've, um, showed you guys previously back in December and then we resubmitted, I believe, on, uh, November seventeenth for final drawings. And in addition to that, we're working closely with the seller, the sewer commission, DPW, Town Council on a sewer agreement that reflects, um, the proposed scope that the sewer commission, DPW, and the seller have been working towards, which is a little bit different than what was contemplated back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Um, and so we're just asking that as that sewer agreement gets finalized, the modification reflects that agreement and that, that scope of work rather than what was originally contemplated. And so with that, Rowan, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but.
Yeah, I'll just give a, um, just to help you navigate the documents in your folders, the notice of project change outlines from the applicant, oops, excuse me, the, all the, all the modifications that they're proposing to make. We have the two final doc, two, um, word documents that are labeled final are the sort of final versions of the conditions and waiver list that have been reviewed by planning staff, building, engineering, and Town Council and, um, everyone's comfortable moving forward with that final language, as well as I believe the applicant is comfortable as well. Um, and then lastly, you have that section from the seven sixty CMR that provides a little bit of, um, background as to what substantial and insubstantial modifications typically are. Um, so my recommendation would just be to review those and kind of use that intent of those to help gauge your decision tonight as to whether this, these modifications are substantial or insubstantial in nature. Ask questions or
Sure. Board?
Not a public thing, but.
Questions, Anne?
Just, I, I'm not sure if I heard you, um, Rowan, did you say that the staff have no concerns?
At this point, yeah, staff has reviewed and no further comments have been made.
Great, okay, thank you.
Lisa?
So I was the only board member, um, who served at the time the original comprehensive permit was put before us, which we approved. Um, and then I was also here when we went through a, another modification to the comprehensive permit when, um, there was the Plan A and Plan B, um, sites, uh, that was changed and we ruled that modification to be substantial because of the impact to our water and sewer, um, because one project, one part of the project wasn't going to be done. Um, but in this case, um, I've reviewed all of this and thank you that the staff has no issues. I view, um, these changes to be insubstantial, myself in comparison to that last time, last go-around. So that's where I'm leaning, so thank you very much.
Peter?
No comments from me.
Same, no comments.
Yep, I have no comments as well. Um, so do we want to entertain a motion?
Um, oh, is, do you have something for us to
Right here.
Read if we were to?
Last line, insubstantial.
Yes, um, okay, let me, is everybody, well, as long as there's no discussion, does anybody have any questions? Um, let me just see, how am I supposed to read this? I just say Okay, um, so I make a motion, if there's no other discussion, um, to determine that the proposed changes to the comprehensive permit for the Point, Point at Hills Farms are insubstantial in nature.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Aye.
So moved, thank you.
Thank you.
We're getting close.
Yep, yeah. I'll be, um, drafting and issuing the amended decision and, um, oh, sorry, Dan, uh, I guess I have another cheat sheet, I don't know. Are you subject to the twenty day?
I need that last sheet, please.
That change or?
Um, generally, no, that's mine. I gave you everything that.
It's within the twenty days.
So the agenda, I don't, right.
Oh, review the date.
And then it says it's deemed approved.
Great.
So.
We're just approving, but we got to add that.
Always cleaner to have it, like, it's written up though, you know, like, lenders and everyone like to see that, to make certain that all the eyes are on it.
Yes, so I'll, I'll be doing that and sending it to your whole team.
Thank you.
Okay, last point of housekeeping is to just, you're welcome, very much.
Thank you.
Um, last point is to review and approve dates for the two thousand twenty-three zoning board meetings. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the dates for the two thousand twenty-three zoning board meetings as shown.
Does anyone know they can't come? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll let you, my apologies. Or just email me later.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
So Rowan, April on.
I suppose.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.